All right, welcome. Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the meeting for the Planning Board, August 23rd, 2017. This meeting is being audio and videotaped to be in compliance with the State of Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws. First on the agenda, we have a continuance of a public hearing that has requested a continuance until our next meeting, which is, when is it September 20th for the next meeting?
Yep, my, the only issue with the September 20th date is the ZBA is meeting, I believe, in this room on that night, so...
Isn't that potentially the case with the remainder of the meetings for the year? Because they're all Wednesdays, aren't they?
Yeah, so we're gonna have to play it, you know, month by month, I think.
So I'm actually not available the 20th, I'm traveling that week.
What about the 27th?
Certainly can go forward without me, but the 27th would be, yeah, I don't, I'm not traveling that week, so...
Does that work for everybody else? Yeah, 27th's okay with me, you guys?
Okay.
Throw a monkey wrench in it.
So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 18 Union Street until September 27th at seven o'clock work?
Seven o'clock works.
Okay, so moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a conference with the folks from Dunkin' Donuts, regarding 134 Main Street. Information discussion on our new proposed building. Oh, wow, what the fuck, I can't, hey, John, how are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the board.
Oh.
Dan Marican with American Engineering, here with John and George Purvis. We just, we have a concept plan here that we would like to review with you. They are thinking about adding on to their property at 134 Main Street, which is, has the Dunkin' Donuts. And we just want to show it to you and kind of get some initial feedback before we go off and do a bunch of work on site design. So the concept that we have...
Betsy, can you make the, the building part bigger, the color, the site plan on the left bigger?
Yep.
See if you can get one more plus out of it.
Kevin, Kevin, would you be so kind as to shh to let you out of there?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nice.
Go ahead, Dan.
So the property's just under an acre. We have the existing Dunkin' Donuts here, and there is a parking field right here. Septic system is under that parking field. There is a drive-through lane that comes through here, wraps around, comes around, and goes out. This part of the property is...
By parking field, you mean the parking lot that's there right now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
This part of the property is just grass. So the, the concept here is to build a three-story mixed-use building, first floor, you know, commercial, retail, personal service, something like that. And then the second two floors would be apartments, a total of five apartments, probably, looking at probably two-bedroom apartments.
Third story in the roof line?
Pardon?
Third story would be in the roof area?
Yes, we have a, we can show you, we have a conceptual architectural plan. So what we'd be looking to do is take, basically to eliminate the existing parking lot and put the building there. And then we would take this area of the property on the right-hand side that is currently just grass, and we would put a new septic system over there and a parking lot over there. And then we would reroute the drive-through lane around the new building, keep the existing lane through here, and then open up a second exit out onto Carlson, right here, one-way exit only. And then that gives us an opportunity to put some parking spaces right in front of the buildings through a one-way driveway that would come across the front with angled parking. It'd have your handicap spaces there. So what we'd do is, there are presently 23 parking spaces for the Dunkin' Donuts. If you add this use to it between the retail component and the five apartments, you require 42. Where, we have 44 on the plan right now, so that may change a little bit, but that's kind of where we're at. So we're right in that territory. And we would take, you know, we have some existing trees along the front that, that I think we can save. There's one existing tree here that we'd have to go. We wanted, we need, basically, we really need to shift the driveway down a little bit so that we can get in and out easier, rather than trying to come in and go over and go around the building. It presents kind of an awkward turning situation. So it works better if the existing driveway sits right here. So it works better if we shift it this way a little bit. And then you have a nice clean in and out over here into the parking field and around.
Gives you a much bigger queue, huh?
Yes.
Are you disturbing any of the, the green belt along Main Street with this?
These parking spaces would disturb the green belt. So there's existing pavement right here, right? We have an existing driveway right here. So these parking spaces here would disturb existing green belt in the front.
What about that lodge, the, whatever, we talked about this before, the two lodge oak trees there in the front, John?
On the right or the left?
Right now, I think they're in front of Dunkin' Donuts, pretty much.
There are two here on the left. They should be able to stay.
That's what we wanted. I know, before we talked to John, that's kind of what...
We can explore that more in site plan approval, but, you know, they're not in the way.
Yeah, I think the plan, so I, I think the plan is that, is, is to try to keep them, but we may just have to trim them, so, just so that it's not encompassing like the new building. But, you know, obviously preserving trees is ideal. So if we can preserve them, then by all means we will. But they might need to be trimmed just a little bit.
So speaking of trees, we're gonna buy our Christmas trees.
I know.
So how do you, I'm sorry, try to...
Just from a sighting perspective...
Maybe, maybe the MBTA will be so fortunate enough to sell us their parking lot.
I'm just curious, from a sighting perspective, if you tried, and I'd, I'd almost like at this initial phase to almost see like a few different options and talk about pros and cons. Like, my first instinct is why not tuck the building over to the right a bit, make your parking field in the middle to service the two. I think one of the downsides of this is for walk-in customers, you know, it's limiting the number of parking spots for getting in and out if you're not doing a drive-through for Dunkies. You know, you're gonna really want to park way over there and, and walk. It's a big change from what they're doing now. And then I just kind of wonder, like, why not investigate that? There might be other things that are negative about moving it over there, but I'd kind of like to consider the sighting options available. And all you're giving us is one. I think there's more than one, to kind of consider pros and cons.
How are we gonna work the grades on the side there, Dan? Because it slopes off pretty good, right?
It slopes off. So this, this parking lot will, this area would end up getting filled.
So you're gonna have a retaining wall there?
We had, we had a retaining wall back here already. We would end up extending it around.
Is that what the red line is?
All the way around.
Yeah, that's what the red line is.
And that side street, is that a private way that, that's usable? Have you determined that?
Yeah, we have access on our...
Yes, we have access rights over this.
Okay, all right.
We have looked at building down here scenario.
We're just shifting straight over.
I think that we thought maybe it might be nicer to kind of create a little, kind of a complex where you have, you know, where somebody wants to be in this building or shop in this building, and they don't have to walk across the parking lot to get to the Dunkin' Donuts. It's kind of our thought was to kind of create a little, you know, centralized area where, where all of the, you know, building amenities are.
Right. I guess it depends on what kind of tenants potentially might be in this kind of space, or what kind of synergies there might be.
You know, so if you have, if you have a big parking lot like you have here now, it kind of almost splits it into two separate activities.
Exactly, but from the residential perspective of it, it's kind of nice to have that buffer, right? So...
Right, but, you know, this is a mixed-use building, so it's commercial on the first floor.
Yep, yep, I get that.
I looked at the same thing, actually, as a customer. The, one of the, the downs on this plan, although I think it's, it's a nice setup, is from walking from those parking spots all the way across to this Dunkin' Donuts store to get coffee, going through the parking lot, over the drive-through, and into the store. I, I don't know if you guys would probably get that better than us. Is that gonna be a hindrance where many times on the parking lot you've got now, if you've got perhaps 17 spots there on the side, they're always filled, or a lot of the time. So that means a lot of those folks with only, how many in the front?
Eight.
Eight. That means you probably have 10 folks on a regular basis, right, running in and out, coming from the far side of the building. The other thing, if you, if you had the building moved over, right, now you've got the opportunity to have a walkout on that private way road, where you actually put some commercial in there, that access and frontage on there, and build your structure up from that.
It does shorten the queue, however, right?
Yeah.
Well, if you move the building over, I mean, you're, you're not driving around that building anymore, you're driving in between it. Maybe, maybe the queue in that circumstance would still be longer than the present queue, but it would be shorter than this one.
It would be shorter than this one.
Yeah.
I think my only other concern, you, overall, sighting strategy is, my initial reaction is I don't like the boxiness that, that lends to the architecture, right? Because it's, it's such like, it's such a square.
So can we...
Right, to give some articulation, some, like, you know...
See the building? Just get some feedback on the building. John's, John and George have been working with an architect, and they have, maybe the elevations...
Yeah.
Which I think are down.
That's actually what I'm responding to, because I feel like through the elevations that it starts to look kind of boxy. Because it's such a square shape.
Yeah, the only, I guess the only concern with moving the building on to where the grass is right now is, so, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yep. So the only, the only concern, I guess, with moving the building on to the grass next door is, so, the set, the current septic we have runs over the parking lot. And, you know, we've had it for 20-plus years. Eventually, it's going to fail, as all septics do. So we don't want to be in a situation where we have a building next door, and then our septic fails, and then we have to have a disturbance to, to our business, and then have to dig up the parking lot to put in a brand-new septic to support. So that was kind of the thought.
The idea here, from a sequencing standpoint, is if you can build the new septic system outside the footprint of the existing septic system, Dunkin' Donuts can stay open...
Right.
And operational with its own parking lot...
Gotcha.
While we build the new septic system, and then we move it over...
Yeah.
And then we can demolish the parking lot and the septic system and work on the building. And it, it would keep them from having to shut the Dunkin' Donuts down for several months. You know, might only have to shut down for a week, under a scenario like that.
Well, and zoning-wise, you've got a 30,000-foot lot here. You, you're coming into the mixed-use zoning for this, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you have the numbers for the commercial versus the retail? Because, as you know, the, I'm sorry, residential. Residential being 65% of the commercial. I'm assuming that all works, right?
This is 56%. This is 56. This proposal is 56% residential.
All right, great. And the only other question they had was for Gino. In our zoning, it calls for, you probably already know this, Dan. It calls for retail below with residential above. We also have the option to have one building that's totally commercial, right? And one building that's totally residential. It could be side-by-side or back-and-forward. Does it also account for when it's split up this way with partial commercial on two buildings? Is that for, okay for the zoning?
I would want to review it closer, but off the top of my head, I think that's, that's still okay.
Have you looked at that, Dan?
Yes, so...
Meaning, meaning there could be an option to make this all residential, if he complied with the percentages?
No, meaning that you either have retail and residential, or retail and residential in a separate building. Here, he's got...
Retail, retail, residential.
Retail, retail, and residential there, so...
But I think what you're implying is this building could potentially be all residential.
Oh, it definitely could be. Right, absolutely.
The way the bylaw reads is, as I recall, is if you were building from scratch...
Right.
A vacant site is commercial first floor, residential residential. That's the way the bylaw wants it. But if you have an existing commercial building, we could have just proposed a residential-only building separately.
Exactly, I know that.
So the, the new building that we're proposing actually complies with the thought process of the bylaw, because it's a third commercial and two-thirds residential. So the fact that we have another commercial building in the mix just reduces our total residential percentage. But the building, as it sits on its own, complies with the bylaw.
Yep.
Interesting. So it actually complies both ways, on its own and with the commercial?
Right.
So you'd like to see a more interesting shape to the building?
Right, I think being a square, right, lends itself to a very boxy, some articulation...
Some articulation, forward and back.
Yeah. And that doesn't necessarily have to mean you move the building, it just...
Right, so we can convey that to the...
Keep a front porch on that, for any chance, for a little walkway?
There is a front porch for a walkway, just on the first floor. This is a side view.
But you have it in the front, too.
Yes. So this is, that's the back, down one more, I think?
Something to the side of the box right now, very boxy.
This is the front view, right here.
The front porch is...
So we have the storefronts here, with an overhanging front porch with columns, and then a second floor, and a third floor, and the third floor's kind of working to the roof line.
So it's very, I don't know if any of you ever go through, like, Islington, like, Dedham Islington, Westwood area? So it's gonna be very similar to the building that's going in Islington right now. Obviously not of that magnitude, that's...
Last from the police station.
Correct, yeah. So not that big. I mean, that built, that's like 20,000 square feet, so, similar concept. You know, minus, obviously, the underground parking, but similar architectural style is that building.
Are those shed dormers on the, on the roof, John?
These are, oh, for these windows?
Right.
Yes.
All right. I'll leave the design critique to our architect on the board. So, other than that, I think that, I encourage you guys to, you know, going forward, it's a great idea, a nice addition to the center of town.
What, what's the height of the, of the roof line there? Top, top right?
I don't know if I can read it here.
I can't read it on this little guy here.
So my other feedback is...
It's 32 and a half to the very top of the roof.
My other feedback is whenever you're developing a site like this, you have a building so close to it, and show your elevation, show it in context. Show Dunkin' Donuts next to it, so that we really can understand how it's suggested. Obviously Dunkin' Donuts is a lower building than this, right. So how is it picking up?
So the architect...
The architect of that.
Do a rendering.
Yeah, we could do that in two buildings.
Right.
How much space is between the two buildings?
Uh, it's about 20 feet, I believe.
So a walkway?
That territory. That walkway, basically, the existing walkway stays. The building starts at the edge of the parking lot. So that there's a walkway with a little seating area, that stays.
Yeah, that'll stay for MB, for that, for the...
All right.
Because they allow...
All right.
And we're gonna put, so the exit onto Carlson Circle, we're gonna put, you know, exit-only signs and do not enter on the other side, just the...
There'll be one-way signs.
Just like your new one, on one end.
So the, the retail downstairs is, what, 3,200 feet?
It's 35. I think it's 35, but we get, we have to put in an elevator, so it'll kind of shrink it a little bit.
Mechanical rooms, elevator stairwells have to all fit in there, but the first floor's right around.
Can we slide that down to the, to the plan view, the layout?
Site plan?
No, yeah, the site plan, please.
The floor plan, the site plan?
Yeah, the site plan. All right, so just the traffic flow, one more time. You come in from Main Street, right?
You come in, entrance would be here at Main Street, or, yeah, this is an exit off.
And you've got two options when you get in there, right? You go left...
You could go left to hit these spaces...
Right.
Or you could go straight or right into the parking lot or drive-through lane.
Yeah, and the drive-through lane empties out around...
That drive-through lane wraps right around, as it does today...
Yeah.
And comes around, and instead of people coming across the front...
Right.
They're gonna go right out to Carlson Circle.
So, okay, so the main exit for the business then will be on Carlson Circle.
The drive-through exit.
Drive-through.
Where's the current exit on this plan? Do you roughly have an idea?
It's right here.
Right there, yeah.
But you have it one on Carlson, too.
And there's also an exit on Carlson.
Right, yeah.
If the queue's too long, it is bug-out.
Yes, yeah, there's a bypass lane here, so you don't get stuck in queue.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It's definitely an improvement over the current drive-through. I like that better. So the back entrance, the back Carlson curb cut could potentially be used as both, as an entrance, right? If you really wanted to. If you were coming from the T parking lot, you wanted to go in there.
Uh, because you have drive-through lane here...
So we have a drive-through and a bypass, so that's gonna be a do-not-enter, also, like, as it is right now.
So both of those on Carlson would be egress only, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna probably cut part of the curb to fit in another parking spot. We can fit three right now, so we're gonna try to cut part of the curb to fit a fourth one.
If we need to.
Any other questions on the board? No, I'm good. Guys, all set?
Yeah, all set.
Great, thank you for your feedback. We appreciate it. We're gonna move forward with design and prepare an application.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kevin?
For Holbrook?
Yes. Next, we have a opening of a special permit for signage on 65 Holbrook Street.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass GL Section 40A and the Norfolk zoning bylaws Section F9A18, that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, August 23rd, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, or 4 Oaks Corp., relative to a special permit application to allow a freestanding sign on the ground at 65 Holbrook Street to advertise multiple businesses in one building. The total area of the sign is not more than 100 square feet, and not higher than 15 feet. The site is located in the Sea Ford Zoning District. Reference assessor's map, 10 Block 32, Lot 8, 141.
Gino, in zoning, they're allowed to have a, one sign for all the occupants, plus also have signs on the individual...
Correct.
Spaces on the building, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, for the record, Tom DePlasmo for Oaks Corporation, and I'm here before the board tonight to ask for a special permit for locating a sign at 65 Holbrook Street, which is Route 115 in front of the Village of Rivers Edge.
Do you want to turn the mic off on the, is the green light on? Push mute.
Push mute?
No, nothing's on now. Okay, don't take this one off.
You hear me now? Oh, wow.
I guess that works, okay.
It's on.
Okay. So basically, what, what's happening with the site is, when you come from Norfolk Center, there's a lot of trees and things. This is, this is looking from, if you were driving from Millis to Norfolk Center, but if you were coming from Norfolk Center, there's a lot of trees that are by the clubhouse and everything. You can't even see the building as you approach. And there's a lot of businesses that are on the side, on the left-hand side elevation, that really have no visibility at all as you come from Norfolk Center. And we, we need to get some type of visibility for those businesses that are there, so that people coming from Norfolk Center, or coming from Millis, because really, until you get right up around the curve, you don't realize that it's right there and that it's a, a business, open for business, until sometimes you go by it and you look directly at the front of the building. And if you're looking at the front of the building while you're driving forward, that's not the safest thing to do either. And people are usually going, you know, 40 miles an hour, so when they're going down there anyways with that. So what we're trying to do is, is get some visibility on Route 115 for the existing businesses. The other issue that we have, too, is a lot of people, and I've heard this from the businesses that are in there, and also people outside just talking, is a lot of folks think that that's part of the village, and it's more of a residential structure, and it's, you know, maybe apartments or assisted living or something. And we just, we really need to define it more as a business and, and commercial entity from 115. So, located out there today, I, I put a couple of stakes where the, where the sign would be proposed to go. There's actually a telephone pole here, and there's a guide wire there. It would be just behind it. It's, it's quite a bit off the front edge, so it wouldn't impact any type of site visibility. If you could see, there's a stone wall that ends right here. This is quite a bit back behind the stone wall, so that the stone wall actually is, is your furthest impact for site visibility. This is, this is back further from that. When you, when you come from Norfolk, I, I've probably driven by this at least two dozen times each way, seeing which is the best location for the best visibility, safest area. And really, right in this area, which is about the middle of the building, if you were coming from 115, a way to locate this. So this is coming from the Millis side. If you could go to another slide, coming from the other angle there, Betsy, that would be great. Actually, I could show you which one, if you do that again. It's coming from the opposite direction. It should be coming from Norfolk Center, yep.
A little bit?
Down a little bit.
One.
So this is coming from Norfolk Center. Once again, you could see the guide wire here, and actually, you've got, I put two columns in there that, you know, sort of represent where that is. If anyone in the board or the audience wants to see where the sign would be located, there are two orange stakes out there right now that everybody could see where it is. Actually, could you go to the, the next slide that actually shows the sign, please?
That one, Paul?
Yep, perfect. So this actually gives an idea of the sign, what it would look like in place. I, I wasn't able to do this, but there would be a stone wall around the base of it, you know, and some plantings, some low plantings that add some character to it, so it's just not stuck out in the middle of, of nowhere. The stone wall would match the stone wall in the front entrance, and we'd have some juniper's down low that would cover that. And then it would have up lighting from the ground, so it would be up indirectly, no lighting on the sign itself. So it's, it comes up from that point. The sign, each one of these, the size, the size complies to the Norfolk zoning bylaws. Each one of these are basically four feet by eight feet. So you'd have four by eight, 32 square feet or 96 square feet total. It's under the 100 square feet. This is roughly, it's under the 15 square feet total. It's roughly about 13 feet tall, going to the top, to the, to the base here with it. That gives you an idea of just, sort of a generic template-type of sign, that, that would be there just with each suite number, but with the Rivers Edge logo and the address up top. If we could go to the slide from the other way, just so everybody could see that, that'd be great. Yep. Now, this one actually did the best I could trying to put this together, but this actually should be back just a little bit from that, that guide wire there. That gives you an idea, coming from Norfolk Center, what it would look like on things, same idea. I also put together a sign with some of the businesses listed on it. And the size of this sign, actually, that one there, probably? We, we do have 15 potential businesses that can go into this space right now in there. We're a little over halfway full. Just to give you an idea, there's a, there's a nice dark blue sign that, that Conley Associates has on the building, and that's the color I thought really looked nice. It broke it up a little bit, and that's the type of color we'd use as a background for the signs. Trying to come up with something a little bit more uniform, and, and actually something a little bit organized, functional. And there was a lot of smaller signs that had been clustered along the street...
Yeah.
And trying to get rid of that, and just have something a little bit more permanent, that's, that's actually a little bit nicer-looking and things, and organized.
So, Tom, your, your proposal would be to stick with a blue and white combo for all these individual signs?
Correct.
Okay, because typically the bill, the businesses have, you know, some little colored signs or whatever.
They could have that on, on the building itself.
On the building itself, right.
Like, you know, on their doors and things and...
Well, you've got a, you've got a good white versus blue contrast, which helps people see it, too. So that's good selection.
And I did, I did, I do like the blue that's there, the deep blue, and I think it, it just breaks things up, and it ties in with the Rivers, River Edge logo. And, like I said, it just gives you an example of some of the company's names and things, and how it would lay out on there and stuff as well. And then, we could actually put down here for leasing information, so we could take down the billboard that's out there, and just really just clean up the whole front entrance and approach of the building as well. So that's, that's sort of what the, that's, that's what, what the sign would look at, look like. And that's the location, how it's situated, site distance with things. I think it, it creates a much safer environment as you're driving by. People aren't turning their heads, they can see it as they drive by. I think it helps the businesses for visibility, especially, you know, it takes away the fact that it's open, you know, that people think it's not open to the public, and, you know, it's, it really is open to the public for business. It's not part of the private, you know, organization that is the village there. And, you know, I think it would help clean up the front of it as well, and it just would add to the, to the whole attractiveness of the site with everything. So, with that, I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Will this do away with all those sandwich boards that are on the right of way?
That, that's what I'm, want to get rid of, you know...
Will there be, like, some sort of understanding that the businesses will no longer use those? Will there be like some sort of understanding that the businesses will no longer use those?
Yes. I mean, if there's some kind of special, maybe for a weekend or something like that and something's there for a day, I think a business, you know, should have the right to put something up for a special. But to take away the permanent where they were out there all the time, yes, I would not want that anymore.
Any other questions, Walter? No? Good.
There's a couple. So I think it's a really nice sign. I especially like the idea of incorporating the stone and some plantings around the bottom. I think that would just be the next nice touch. I do wonder about effectiveness from folks traveling from Norfolk. I think it's very effective if you're coming from Millis because you see the sign and then you can enter. I worry a little bit about the effectiveness because by the time you see it from Norfolk, you've passed the entrance. And so have you given any thought? Do you think you would need a second one? I mean, the site plan doesn't really show what's happening down here. So have you thought about that?
I've actually driven this, like I said, at least two dozen, probably many more times from Norfolk coming up.
Right.
And I've come from the Norfolk side. And what we have as a challenge is the clubhouse has a nice very buffer.
Yeah.
With a lot of big evergreens there. And I actually, though this sign's in that location, so as soon as that evergreen break happens, you could actually see the sign in a distance. I want to say you probably see it 100 to 150 feet before the entrance of the village.
Okay.
You could test it out yourself with the orange stakes that are there.
I'll look for the stakes, yeah. Okay.
And I put that up there so everybody could visually see it.
But it's really pretty. Nice job. Did you work with a graphic designer at all?
With a sign company, yes.
Yeah, nice.
Any other questions? Did you review this for compliance with zoning?
Not yet, no. But generally, I know it's in the ballpark at least. There's not any dramatic differences.
Anybody in the audience here for this hearing? All right, since none, I would accept a motion to close the...
Do we have any, not obligation, but sort of courtesy for designer review?
I don't think we have any obligations.
It has a courtesy. I mean, we could...
I will leave it up to you folks. How, when did you intend on getting this thing?
As soon as we can. I'd like to, you know, get it in the fall here and stuff. I have a question. For Mr. Calucci. Correct me if I'm wrong. Is there, there is a 20-day appeal period on this, isn't there?
Yes.
So, yeah. The sooner the better, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with it as is. I think it's well designed. No issues. Yeah. Yeah, that we could do. That we could do, sure. All right, that being said, can you motion to close the public hearing for a special permit? So moved. Second?
Second.
Own favor?
Aye.
You can review this then after the fact, Gino. Okay, you can write up the permit anyway. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
We're on schedule. We have a special permit public hearing for an open space plan for Cranberry Heights.
In accordance with the Town of Norfolk zoning bylaws, the Planning Board rules and regulations in MGL Chapter 48, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 23rd, 2017, at 7:30 PM in Room 124 in the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, on the application of Bela Rosa Stables LLC for approval of a special permit for an open space preservation subdivision plan entitled Cranberry Heights. Plans by Andrews Survey and Engineering Incorporated, Uxbridge, Massachusetts, dated July 7, 2017, located off Cranberry Meadow Road and Eagle Drive. The subdivision is proposed to have 22 lots. See Assessor's map, 6 Lot 1, Lots 5 and 7 in the R3 zoning district. The property is owned by William H. and Beverly J. Slattery, 110 Park Street, Norfolk, Massachusetts.
You're up.
Good evening. On behalf of Bela Rosa Stables LLC, my name is Steve O'Connell from Andrews Survey and Engineering. We're here this evening to present a special permit application for an open space preservation development, as the legal notice stated. The property is located off of Cranberry Meadow Road, which is off of Lawrence Street, situated between Cranberry Meadow and Eagle Drive. It's a 32-acre parcel of land. For the locus purposes off the page to the, on the bottom of the page would be Park Street. This may look familiar for someone, for folks who may have been on the board for a little while. This was an approved special permit for open space and subsequently approved for a definitive subdivision circa 2007. What we'd like to do is request renewal of that special permit. Also include some of the revisions that we've proposed. We believe that the plan we're providing, part of this application, is a better overall plan. First and foremost, we provide more open space. We think we lay the roads out in a manner a little more conducive, although not drastically different, but a little more conducive to the topographic conditions, with the same number of lots with less infrastructure, which would ultimately go to the town, less infrastructure to maintain. The project will be serviced by on-site private septic systems. At this point in time, we're proposing private wells due to the lack of municipal water, host proximity.
You realize that's against our zoning.
Could you reference that section? We looked...
Yeah, we can. And that was a problem with the subdivision years ago. The water had to be run from Park Street to Franklin to get service to public water. But we'll get that fire from the zoning officer. Our all-new subdivisions require connection to town water. Gino, you know that section off here?
Not off the top of my head. I do, I am aware of it, yeah.
Which is why this thing ended up, ended up across the way at Buckley Man that was done by Caldwell Builders. They just fell flat for that reason. Now there's a lot happening here, so...
Sure. Water is actually within striking distance, so we would happen to be proposing wells. But certainly, certainly not a deal breaker for us. So that being said, we're proposing an open space parcel of 13 acres here and then an open space parcel of 2.03 acres down here. This open space parcel will contain some stormwater management facilities for the subdivision. We think it's a nice layout, given some of the site conditions and constraints. We're going to be connecting two roads, not creating a dead end situation. A good portion of the property, you can see the tree line on the plans, a good portion of the property has had some forest thinning. So we're concentrating the density of the project in areas that have already had forestry activities. A portion of the property is mapped priority and estimated habitat. You can see that line here. That's this thicker dashed line. Again, we're concentrating the density of the development outside of that mapped area. We have identified wetland resource areas. Although none fall actually on the property, the buffer zone to these resource areas do come onto the property. But we are well aware of those and are mindful. And with the exception of perhaps a trail to connect the open space as part of the project, there should be no work or very little work in the buffer zone.
Steve, take us where the trail to the open space will go. And as you're going along the open space, what are the grades like?
The grades are reasonable. We actually utilize some existing paths. So from the end of the cul-de-sac here, we would...
What road?
Well, this would probably be Eagle Drive Extension.
Correct.
And that's what was approved as on the old, on the original subdivision. So we would have a passive, active and passive recreation path here, really just following the grades. I mean, there is some...
You're going downhill, right?
Yep, exactly. So this, yep, this is the high, the high part of the site, and it comes downhill slightly, and then continues to come downhill. And then there's a little steep grade here, but this is an existing path. So instead of clearing trees and doing more land disturbance, we're tying to this existing gravel path. That gravel path will continue. It goes off the property here along the pond, the pond, and you can see the cranberry bogs from there. The path actually kind of comes in here and goes towards this backyard. We're thinking that it's going to kind of fall somewhere in between, running parallel with these contours. So it wouldn't be too steep up or down. It's going to be parallel with these contours. We've got an easement proposed over the rear of these lots, so we can provide that connection to this portion of the open space, where the trail would tie into an existing gravel path. It would come back out to the road, serving as a trailhead for some of the residences there. You know, many of the residences will have direct access to the open space. And the ones that don't, for example, the ones that are in here, given the topographic changes on the property, will have real nice vistas of the open space. So, you know, a lot of those site...
Would it be nice to create a little connection between 16 and 17, so you can get that through loop on the gravel path?
Yep.
See that?
Sure.
Pick up on your head, yeah.
Right through there. Yep. That's not, not a bad idea. And it's quite possible that we would have a drainage easement going through there, so they could coexist.
Where are the bogs in relationship to this?
They're over here.
And where's the 200-foot riparian line?
It is this line here.
The dashed dot?
Yep.
So the odds are you won't have to even be near that, correct?
Just with this, if we end up in this location as the trail.
It says it's the 100-foot wetland buffer.
Yep, this is the 100-foot buffer, but this thinner line, which comes in and then kind of crosses over the buffer and then is almost...
Oh, is that the riparian line?
Yeah, so it's labeled, the label for the 200 riparian line is actually on Lot 12. Because the, because the wetlands are closer than the actual brook that you would measure from, the 100-foot buffer actually comes further onto the property in some places than the 200-foot.
Yeah, it's hard to pick up.
With the existing gravel trail there, why are you creating a new one? What, I don't understand why you're not utilizing the existing one.
Well, this one goes off the property. So if we got to the bottom, we'd have to do something with that. And the terrain is pretty steep over here. We could potentially use this one. We could pick it up perhaps over here. But the way that it's directed, you know, towards that lot...
Who owns the property down below there?
The owner of the property now, but he's not the applicant.
Fair enough, okay.
And that's certainly not set in stone, you know, conceptually speaking.
Yeah, I see what you're doing, just to comply with...
Yeah, I mean...
It's actually more comfortable the way you're proposing it, too, to go with the grade.
You know, we could pick this up a little bit and then kind of work our way down the hill and kind of come back that way. You know, I like to see that those trails get built, kind of, you know, decisions made on site, so you're avoiding specimen trees, things like, you know, things like that, sensitive areas.
Not that it comes into it, again, at this stage, but the water and the coordination of the line, which is going to make this project doable, because as you know, as we open up to neighbors, there's a subdivision across the way that's now in process, too. And they're talking about running a line up Lawrence Street to access their property. You know, you don't have the plan here to show where the egress to that property across the way will be, do you? Is it going to be pretty much a crossing Cranberry Meadows Road?
My understanding is that it's pretty close to where Cranberry Meadow comes off Lawrence.
All right, there's two of them, one there and one up by, yeah.
Yep.
All right.
And Eagle Drive, that property across the way.
And I did talk to the fire chief today, and I guess that Walter had some conversations with him. Is that correct, Walter? Howard, sorry. Still, sorry, Howard. I apologize. Rick, what is your intention? Assuming that bylaw is in effect there and you do have to run town water, where is the looping going to go on this project? Because right now...
Well, it would depend on the timing of the construction of that water. We'd have the potential to bring it up Cranberry Meadow. We'd have the ability to bring it up Eagle Drive. I can't speak for Howard, and I'm not sure if he knows the answer, sitting right here this evening, whether they would actually be looped, depending on other aspects of, not necessarily this project, but whatever arrangements are made with projects across the street. And if I'm not mistaken, if absolutely necessary, I believe we could get an easement and come right straight from Park Street, because there's an existing cart path through the wetlands, over the wetlands here, like a farm road to this property. But that'd be something we'd have to...
Yeah, you'd probably have trouble with that. But anyway, Walter, Howard, I'm sorry, do you, do you mind just, what are your thoughts on this? Because the water in this area here is a big deal.
The first question of the looping, we would probably loop within our own development, so that we would come back on those lots as they tie into the existing road. And we would just create an easement and come right back up, so that we would satisfy the regulations for a loop. And we've looked at it all different ways. And of course, you know, I know Tommy, well, I would have to have conversations. We'll see what his timing is and everything else as far as to try to just get together and get that accomplished.
Right, that'll be between you folks, right. And we haven't gotten, we haven't asked for any comments from the water department or DPW, but I'm sure that's coming down the road. Because that whole neighborhood that you're connecting to is all without water service. And I'm sure they want something involved there. But anyways, that's for another time. But why don't we go over Gino's questions? Do you get some responses back, Gino?
Yes, they did provide a letter with responses. Do you want me to go through them or...
Yeah, could you?
Okay. My first comment had to do with the concept plan or yield plan, the yield plan, actually. And the number of lots shown. And I questioned the number because there was a, the dead end shown that did not, did not comply with the rules they have since. The response was that they are now showing a temporary turnaround to create a cul-de-sac in order to comply with the subdivision rules.
With that temporary turnaround, that lot there still has the frontage and the land area to be a lot?
I have not double-checked that so far. But it's, but doing it as an easement, it wouldn't affect the frontage. Because the lot line would still be the same.
Yeah, we had an issue with an easement for a road that's going to be accepted by the town before or runs Standish Drive, and it gets into some murky situation with the landowner. So I'm not sure. Why don't you check into that and see?
I will. Next was the, just noting the 100-foot buffer and 200-foot arid area and that, just to pay attention to that. And they said they would provide deed restrictions to prevent structures on those, to ensure compliance with our prohibition of structures within the 200 feet. Next was the requirement that cuts and fills be kept to a minimum. There's no exact standard on that, just that they do be kept to a minimum. And they've said that they have to meet the grades of the two streets that they're connecting to. And in, in compliance with, or with that parameter, they would minimize the lots and the cuts and fills. Next was the requirement that a four-step design process by a registered landscape architect be used. And I don't remember if the old, the original plan might have done that process. I don't...
This plan stands on its own, though. The other one's expired.
Correct, correct. Anyway, they laid out the steps that were considered in complying with that, while acknowledging that it wasn't done by a registered landscape architect. And that, that's a zoning requirement. So that's where that one stands. They did say that a registered landscape architect would be involved in the final design.
We might want to, at this stage, guys, have a cut-fill analysis done, where we have an issue across the way with another subdivision. I think that, and of course, in our open space, the theory of open space is to keep the natural topography as close to where it is now. So the amount of cuts and fills... to where it is now, so the amount of cuts and fills and the change in topography are most important in an open space permit, which gives you 10% more lot. So I think what we'd probably like to do is, or I would anyway, we'd like to see a cut-and-fill analysis and see some, there are grades there, I can barely read them, but there are grades in the roadways, correct?
Not on the plan that you're seeing there, but we have-
Those are just stations?
Those are just stations, right, we have contours, existing contours, we can, we can do it.
Great, if you could, if you could do that, so we could tie into the elevations and have a cut-fill analysis for the different road sections, so we could see just what exactly is being removed, so if the board decided they want to try to minimize that, we can talk about it then, okay?
Sure.
Questions, Walter? Yeah, the, let's see, Cranberry Meadow Drive, that little extension that goes into the property, and also Eagle Drive, is that extended right up to the property line in both cases, or are those new to be constructed?
The one here off Cranberry Meadow, that's an existing strip between two abutting lots.
Is it developed, is it, is it-
Nope.
It's just, it's a right-of-way?
It's just a right-of-way, that's correct.
Okay, fair enough. What about the other one up there?
Eagle Drive, again, it's just a right-of-way that comes right to the property line.
Where does Eagle Drive end at the moment?
There's a cul-de-sac at the end.
Got it, okay, yep, understood, thank you.
The pavement falls short of the right-of-way.
Where's Cranberry Meadow Road come off of?
Lawrence Street.
Eagle Drive circles around and then comes back out onto Lawrence Street.
That's correct.
Down a little bit from Cranberry Meadow.
Yep.
Okay, the next comment had to do with the percentage of wetlands up within the open space, and as he noted, there are, there are no actual wetlands within the parcel at all, so the open space would obviously meet that requirement, since it would have no wetlands at all. Next, the bylaws suggest that the open space be in contiguous parcels, though it allows them to be in separate parcels, which they had two separate parcels, and now they're proposing an easement to connect them along with the trail, which, you know, I think is a, is a great thing. Next was, number eight was, the bylaw requires the land use plan for the open space, and they're noting that it would be for passive recreation and natural resource protection, and they've added a note to that on the plan. Similarly, the ownership of the open space was not shown on the plan, though that is technically actually a decision of the board, but they're proposing that it be conveyed to the town of Norfolk. Next, there was, there was not a site context plan or a site analysis plan, which is specified in the bylaw, and their, their response is that they have provided the individual, the, all the information required on those two plans on the site context plan. If we want them to do separate plans, they would, they offer to do that. And finally, well, finally was just actually a suggestion that the open space parcel be connected through an easement along the back, if they couldn't use the existing gravel path through an easement on the abutting parcel under the same, under the same ownership. And that was it.
I think that from a layout, I just think that Lot 22 is a little bit awkward. You know, you're trying to maximize and get everything you can there, but I think the site development and layout would be served to improve just by going down to 21 lots.
Can you show us 22 on that map?
Yes, please.
What about it concerns you?
I don't like, I don't like that the front, so you have the, this, I don't like that the backs of the houses are looking at the side of that house, it just feels kind of crammed in there. I think that you've tried to be sensitive to buffers from existing neighbors to the most that you can, but this particular one just feels like the leftover piece of the pie that just got kind of shoved in there. All the other houses are addressing the frontage, they're addressing the neighborhood, they're addressing the buffer zone, and then there's this leftover piece, which literally was just kind of crammed in on the edge there, and it's just so obvious for me.
Well, it's one of the larger lots proposed, so, you know, I think what makes it awkward is the curve-
Yes.
-that we're kind of forced to utilize to tie into Eagle Drive.
And therefore how you have to orient the building, so the shape as well, and I know it's a large square footage-wise, but shape and location, it just doesn't feel like it fits in, it feels like the orphaned little brother over there. So, anyway, that's just a, just a comment.
Something we would, we would look at.
Yeah, and so your notes, though, say that, number nine, that the project will be serviced by Town Water, but you said it wouldn't be, so I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused why you would present it as not being Town Water, but then you have all these plans for Town Water, so is it Town Water or is it not Town Water?
Well, according to your zoning bylaws, it's going to be Town Water.
So that's clear then, that's going to be, there's no-
Unless my client directs me to seek some sort of variance from your bylaws, but, you know, that's probably a long shot.
Yeah. Are there any other significant waivers that you're thinking are in the realm of this? I mean, I know it's open space, so the very concept that it's open space allows a lot of flexibility, but-
Yeah, I mean, probably the sidewalk on one side, given the, you know, the offering of the open space and the off, the off-site trails and things like that. Obviously, anytime you can reduce pavement, you can reduce runoff, but, you know, there's a, you know, an extent where that just doesn't become feasible or reasonable. Any waivers, Howard? You can-
So it's just something to think about, and then my last comment is, of course, it'd be really interesting to see some landscaping thoughts behind this, and if there's opportunities to preserve clusters of trees, or how you would be replanting if not, so those are my only comments.
Just if I understand correctly, if we come out a little bit over here, I know we were talking about this before, I just want to make sure I understand. I know we were talking about connecting the two open space areas that you have identified on the map, but was that also going to connect out until, into the road over here as well for public access, or no?
No, it would have to go over private property to do that. But it would be public access when it comes out to the road here, because the trail would come down, tie into this existing gravel path, and come up to the road. So this would be like a, kind of a trailhead.
What zoning district is that, Gino?
R3.
200-foot frontage?
200.
Folks here for this filing, have any questions?
We're not far enough along to have a traffic impact study at here.
No, this is just, they're looking to use the bylaw of open space just to preserve more of the woodland there, and it allows them to have smaller frontages, a lot of these frontages, you notice, average like 140 feet rather than 200 feet, and our, the lot sizes can be smaller, in the theory that we have less roadways and more open space left natural, which is what the open space plan is. If we approve that, they're allowed 10% more lots, which in this case is two, and that's why we're looking for the actual cut-and-fill analysis to make sure that all of the natural woodland that's there that can be protected, you know, is protected. So if it's a matter of them having to raise roadways or alter things to do that, then that's what the board will be looking at, and in return, they get the benefit of two extra lots in their subdivision.
And that's fine, I was asking.
Sir, could you be some kind of user, and identify yourself?
Frank Riley, I live on Cranberry Meadow Road, and in fact, I abut that lot that may or may not stay there, that you were talking about a second ago, Michelle. I'm just curious, not necessarily because of the impact of this, although this has an impact, but taken into account-
You're not on?
Am I not talking?
I'm usually told I'm not loud enough, but, anyway, this, taken into account, the other construction across the street, Abbeyville there, you know, adds a significant burden when tied in together, and that's why I was asking about traffic impact.
Yeah, when they do the traffic impact, that's a great question. Both projects obviously would stand on their own, they're different landowners-
Understood.
But I'm sure when the traffic, if we decide to do a traffic report on this-
Right.
Then they would obviously take in consideration what's going on across the way, I would think.
Yeah, I have a concern too.
Another thing, Mr. Chairman, is that oftentimes, when traffic studies are prepared for other projects, it's typical and customary for traffic studies to include information about other potential projects, and in this case, the fact that this application is filed, it'd be public record, so I would imagine if the traffic study for other projects in the vicinity have not been finalized, that they would include this potential.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you, but I want to say that this actually came up yesterday.
Come to me, yeah, that traffic study on the property across the street was at the public hearing yesterday.
And it did not include this, is the point I was going to make, so.
You're going to keep your eyes here.
All right. It did not-
I know it's hard, but-
Understood, I'm just trying to address everybody.
Keep trying to run the thing, okay.
The traffic study for the proposal across the street did not include this.
I understand, that's what I just mentioned, yes.
Good, good for me to know, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Green light's on. Yeah, Mike Judice, Eagle Drive, so just a couple of questions, one on the water, obviously a major issue here, is the, the plan then, if for some reason the Abbeyville project does not go forward, that this project would extend water either through the easement you mentioned, the existing property, or otherwise up Lawrence Street, and then either through Cranberry Meadow or Eagle Drive?
Well, if Abbeyville didn't go, that's the timing issue they have, Rick, someone has to run the water up Lawrence Street to this project, so the timing's going to be consequential, who does what when, that's where I think that the two folks developed, they're going to have to get together and come up with a timeframe, so nobody's held up.
And I understand that, my larger question is more, if for some reason that Abbeyville project doesn't go forward at all, so then it would be incumbent upon this applicant-
Absolutely.
-to extend the water-
Absolutely.
Would they still plan on going forward with this project?
Can't answer that question, unfortunately, too early for that type of, you know, question to be answered.
And then just a second question, you had mentioned, the applicant had mentioned the existence of the estimated habitat, and they showed that on the plan, just looking for more information in terms of what the species is or are, what the restrictions that entail.
Is this in a priority habitats?
Yes, yep.
All right, so have you filed with natural heritage yet?
No, we have not.
Right here.
We're familiar with the species here, it is a turtle, there are records available in town from the last time this project moved forward, pending the decision of this board, it would be the next step for us.
What did they find in the previous, eastern box turtles here?
I believe it was a spotted turtle.
All right, they're not endangered, just in-
Marbles, marbles.
Marble salamander.
Marble salamander, well, my apologies.
Spotted turtles are off the list.
You're right, yep, it was a marble salamander.
All right.
My apologies, I was thinking of last night's meeting.
So the natural heritage, and you folks, if you wanted to comment on the filing, will have to look at this project and see if they count it as a taking or not. If they do, they can modify the project or have other sources of compensation from them, but that's a filing that they'll have to do, and obviously present it to us.
Thank you.
Betty Ann Wakely, and I, I'm in a butter at the end of the cul-de-sac there, and my question is, I can't, you can't tell right now, would you mind scrolling down a little So my question here is, so I'm there, Wakely, I can't read the lot number, whatever, 20, go over to, okay, so my question is, the, the two houses that basically abut me, how far are those houses set back from my property line?
Where are you, now?
She's like right in the, right there. So, you know, this is high.
Okay, so you're on Brett Farm Road?
Yeah, I'm on Brett's farm. I, I'm just curious how far that is.
They're about 150 feet from property line to property line.
Oh, okay. It's a decent buffer there.
Which will all be left natural.
Because when I looked at the map, I thought it was like 25 feet. No, it's, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay, yep. Yes, sir?
I had a question.
Sure.
Margaret Cahaly, Cranberry Meadow Road, and I thought they said they'd be submitting it, there was nothing with like the heights and elevations of the road, are they going to all be to grade with what Norfolk will accept for streets, or is there leeway there also where they don't want to?
That's the next step, this is just the permit for open space subdivision. If we approve this, then they go forward and do all the definitive work to do all the information you're talking about.
Thank you, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I know that this project stands on its own, but if board members who might not be familiar would care to see what the open space plan approved before showed, I think you'd see the benefits, some of those open space lots-
Yeah, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, just in case they want to see them this evening, I've got extra copies, but the, the open space lots that were approved to be built were right up against the budding property lines of existing residences on Brett's Farm Road. So that, that space between those, those lots, yeah, so this plan's upside down compared to current plan we prepared, and we didn't prepare this other plan, but Betsy, down to the bottom, yeah. So you can see these lots right here, I mean, they're right up to the property line, so we, you know, we made a concerted effort with the input from the client on his wishes to provide those buffers, increase the open space, you know, make lots that we think are more, you know, feasible to build, you know, instead of these long driveways, and, you know, you've got a, a house in the front and a house in the back, and it kind of speaks to your concern, Michelle, about that other lot, how they're, so.
On this original layout, where was the open space?
It was off the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And then there was a parcel up here, which was 1.72.
Similar, similar two chunks.
Similar, yeah, I mean, these were contiguous, they just called this a parcel, but we've, we've got about 15 acres of open space, and they had about, well, probably technically 12, but Parcel B was going to be entirely stormwater basin.
Yeah.
We've got about, we're pushing 15 acres of open space.
You're going to be cutting into that roadway and drilling down the grade on one side and then filling in on the other side, is that how you're going to do it?
Yeah, I mean, there's a section in here, if you're familiar with the property, there's a section in there that probably presents the biggest topographic challenge, but it's good sand and gravel, so we'll do what's necessary, but, you know, nothing more.
So that being said, hopefully that most of the material can be kept on this site and used, so we have very little coming off of it.
That's always our goal.
That will be ours too.
You know, you-
We'll be right in sync.
Knowing the cost of trucking and material hauling these days, if you can minimize that sort of stuff, you-
I remember the last plan, that's what the, the last developer was talking about, sort of cutting down the center and taking this down and filling this up, bringing it across the way, so.
Yep.
All right.
Logical spot for a collection of stormwater because of the topography, so we're going to utilize that to the maximum extent, practical.
Do you folks have any other questions before we continue this? Yes, sir? Just a name, please. Microphone, please.
David Mastro, Lawrence Street. I know on the, his original, not this plan, but the plan that they have, Lot 22, that, Michelle, you were talking about, I know those people that live right there, their well is right on that far line, will they also do any type of study if this moves on about the impact to the people's wells in that area?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Just because, I mean, that neighbor's right there, their well is literally almost on the property line, so that would be a huge impact onto that, yeah.
That's something we normally seek legal advice on, because that's sort of a-
I don't know, that's why I was just asking, also the impact of all our wells being-
Right.
I know this stands alone, but with, with two massive developments coming in now.
That has come up many times in the past, and the issue was always whether the developer has any responsibility or will take some initially, or does it become a matter of the resident versus developer to prove that their well output has changed since the, since the development. If that's a concern of you, you might want to just do some testing on your well now, just to get a testing of the quality of the water and the output, just so that if you ever decide that you're really losing half your capacity- so that if you ever decide that you're really losing half your capacity, you've got a basis point to say, well, I was tested this day, it was outputting 15 gallons a minute, and right now it's doing two, so at least you have a basis for that. Other than that, it's all just hearsay, you know? But I'm not exactly sure legally how that would work. We could check with town council and find out.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. That's it?
I have one more, sorry. It's just Margaret Cahaly again. Do you be able to approve this without a plan for the water from them?
Pardon me?
I'm saying, we could, you could still move forward with this without a plan for them getting the town water over?
With the open space permit, we could, yes.
Yes, that's what I said, because I know you had asked a lot of questions about water, so I wasn't sure, but you won't need that from them yet.
Not at this stage, no.
Thank you.
Before someone can get a building permit in the town, they would have to show that they have access to town water, so. All right, I think we can, you folks be set with that information for our next meeting in a month?
Yes.
Be fine? All right, so we can continue this public hearing, special permit of open space until our next meeting, which is September 27th, and we can put them in at 7:15. If somebody would give me a motion?
So moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, guys. We'll see you next time.
Thank you.
I didn't do that. That went better than I expected.
You have the information together for the lot releases for Tailwind Circle?
I didn't really give you any, um, that road is already bonded.
Do you have the form G, the lot release form?
Yep, I have that form. The fees do $2,000 per lot.
For these, for these three lots. So basically, we've got the seven lot subdivision, Tailwind Circle. The whole road has been bonded, they're releasing lots as they go, because each lot release comes with a $2,000 open space fee. So they've got the first three lots already released, I believe, so now you're looking to have three more lots released. It's already been bonded. Betsy tells me the fee for the $2,000 open space has been paid.
Good.
So, Rick, that being said, unless there's any questions, we can, you're all set with this, Gino? You have no issue with this, right?
No. I didn't look at it, but from what, from what I've heard, it's all, it's all straightforward, absolutely.
So, nobody has objections?
Is this the one that I'm looking for?
Yes.
Yeah, this is, this is the lot.
Oh, yeah, and I brought the subdivision plans.
This is it here.
It is?
That's, Betsy provided that to me this afternoon.
I don't remember that. Oh, yeah.
You have that on, on the TV there? She'll put it up on the screen.
It was just before me.
Do you want some history? This, this years ago, 12 years ago, was a 26 lot, 40B, approved subdivision.
Wow.
In that, in that property? Right. And they tried to sell it, Ron Nation tried to sell it for years and couldn't get nowhere, because he had a lot of gravel, the water cable was real high, so he held this for like eight, nine, 10 years, got rid of the 26 lot plan, come back, and applied for just a seven lot subdivision, and left everything else to the town for open space, so.
So is he, this is an open space?
This is an open space. I've been around long enough to remember when there were airplanes flying out of the town.
So do we need to vote on anything on that?
Make a motion.
Yes, we have to vote to release the lots four, five, and six.
And is there any update on the bond that we need to do as part of that?
The bond's bonded full. The attorney bonds are going full.
And we don't have to reduce, they're not asking for a reduction or anything?
Mm-hmm.
Give money and leave it on.
I think he came from that.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that.
Thank you. So, want to make the motion to?
Motion to release lots four, five, and six at Norfolk Landing, Tailwind Circle.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have that form, Betsy? We could sign it right now.
Sign, seal, deliver.
Oh, no, sign on yourself.
Stay in your lane.
Is it hot in here, or is it raining?
A little bit warm.
It's always hot in here. Crack the window, will you? Yeah, why don't you? Whatever problems we have, it's always Gino's fault, we all know that. We have to draft special permit for Norway Farms.
We have a draft, we have a packet.
Yep, I already reviewed it. Have you reviewed that, Michelle?
I won't be.
Oh, that's right, you're... Walter, have you had a chance to review the?
Yes, I've read it, yep. The decision, you mean? Yeah, yes.
For Rick.
Yep.
Yeah, how did it, would Rick Godrow had called me. One of the issues was, first for me anyway, about the open space money, since these, the open space, is the open space going to stay and be maintained by the neighbors?
It's going to be called in a homeowners association?
For, for, right here.
Yes.
Use, but with the whole town, it's town use.
Yeah, we're going to have it for, yeah, homeowners association.
Rick's question to me was, the $2,000 per lot that you put in, how many lots were there, 13?
There's 14 total, two are going to existing structures, so, yeah, I think it would be 13.
All right, so the $26,000, Rick was asking whether that money could be put into a private fund for the association, because the theory was the neighbors were going to be maintaining the, the open space. And what I said to Rick, I've never heard of that before, because that would, it's, it's open space for the town people's use also, really. So with the town using it, the town has no other control on that money if it was into a private association account. That language, what is the language in here? Did that change, Gino?
It says.
On the open space money, is the $2,000 per lot?
It says, into, into an open space maintenance fund to the town.
It says to the town.
Well, it doesn't say to the town. It says, following a full, the applicant shall deposit a sum of $2,000 upon a lease lot into an open space maintenance fund, with checks made payable to that account for the maintenance of the open space.
I, I think it was intended to be the town, but if it's, the town's not going to own it at the same time, it doesn't really make sense for the town to, to have the maintenance fund.
The town is going to own it, but, not own it, but be able to use it.
But be able to use it.
Right. So you're saying that the association would have the ability to have that in their own account?
I would think so, yes.
I think we ought to talk to town council on that. Yeah, perhaps. Because as a minimum, maybe we'd even want, not, if they're going to do it diligently, of course, when it gets into that and they have other obligations, we have to make sure that it goes for the space. Perhaps it could be something like a double signature thing on this checking account, where if funds are spent by the association for the open space, then, you know, the town can sign off as a cosigner just to release the funds. But I think that's something, right now, the language doesn't prevent us from signing, correct? It doesn't say whose name the account will be on. Right, so why don't we carry on and try to get this executed, and then talk to town council, and that'll be addressed before you put the first few thousand in, before you have the first lot released, which is way down the road, okay?
That's correct.
We'll have plenty of time to check in the meantime.
I was just.
I just never heard the concept, but, yeah.
It just seems to me that there's going to be, where we don't have direct frontage to Midway Street, there's going to be an area coming down in before the first homes that will need to be maintained. And then the homes don't go really to, well, on the, if you're driving into the right-hand side, to the tree line. So there's that area that probably should have some maintenance, and then, you know, going up into the woods and taking care of bittersweet and invasive species, stuff like that. But it would, we would set it up like a condo association, where there would be people in the neighborhood. It, it wouldn't be mine money. It would be all done legally, and...
Is the association going to have any other upkeep besides the trails? Are there any other common spaces in there that they're going to have to be responsible for?
We haven't designed any yet, but that.
All right, so we can just put that on hold until we get to the point that we know what's going on and check with town council, okay?
We can all get more informed about it.
Right, exactly. Like I said, it's the first time I've heard the request, it doesn't sound, you know, out of, out of reach, but we'll check and see. But we can sign this with the way, the language, the way it is, correct? All right. What was, did Rick mention something else to you about questions on that, Betsy?
There was one question on page three, H, the site is not adjacent to an existing farm, nor is the open space to be used for agricultural purposes, so no protection for a farm is necessary. Gino's got a question in there, is this true? What about the existing house lot? Yes, that is true, when it, it's not to be used for agriculture, correct?
Correct.
All right. John, depending on what the town council says and how that language works out, it, it might be an opportunity to take a note to update the bylaw, too.
Right, yeah.
At a future town meeting.
Also, the, the other part of my question on W here was that if it is a homeowners association, then a management plan needs to be prepared, that's in the bylaw. So that management plan can address the maintenance items that would, that the funds would be used for. And it could, and it could also potentially identify when, you know, what approvals would be needed to extend the funds.
So this, we can sign this, and those things could be conditioned based on how this thing turns out and what they do.
Yeah, well, the language would have to be changed, because right now, it's just a question I have in here, but.
Because they're going to have a homeowners association, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So that would have to be added in. You got the one typo change, Betsy, on page number five, and whole book changing to Midway Street? Other than that, Gino, looks fine?
Okay.
So we can vote to approve the special permit as amended? Yeah, I'll do, sure. You ready?
Yep.
Okay. I move to approve the special permit, notice of decision number 201-7-02, dated August 23rd, 2017, for the property entitled, development entitled Norway Farms. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Michelle is abstaining from this.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have four, I... Yeah, you need a super majority here. Super majority, four, four zero, okay. All right. So if you are...
I have a signature page.
Oh, you do. What about the homeowner language? Oh, just give us the signature page.
Yeah, you know, I can...
That's fine. Yep, that's fine, okay. You're all set then, Rob?
Thank you very much for all your time and.
You're welcome.
Hard work over the last two months.
You're welcome, thank you, too.
I'll get that, I'll get the sound for it.
That would be great. Okay, super. This is going to be a really good, we have some unique special briefs that we're going to transplant. It's going to really come out nice, so. Thank you for your help.
Okay. Last thing on new business. Our regular engineer, Mike with Beta, has left. Excuse me.
Left Beta?
Right. In the past six months, he is the second engineer that has been assigned to us that has left Beta. What was?
Is it us?
Right, I don't know.
Is it Beta?
Right, yeah, but anyway, I thought it might be a good idea to get a couple more firms into the works, and send out, as Betsy sends out RFD requests for proposals, really, we should be sending out more than one, because the applicant should have an option, in other words, we've competitively shopped to get them the best price, which we find it hard to do. We do have Weston and Sampson, but their prices have been so outrageously high, we haven't used them for a while, and they actually stopped responding to our bids, because their prices were many times twice the other ones, so. Rick, what's that?
With Beta, was that Beta something like 700 an hour? I remember seeing it on one of its proposals.
Well, they're not per hour, they charge.
700 a meeting, I think it's.
Right.
Or meeting.
Yeah, that sounds right.
They each charge at a different rate, each level of expertise, but I thought we might get a couple of engineers and have Betsy contact them and see if they might be interested in bidding on some of the proposals. I know that the ZVA is using a few people right now, and I think they're happy with them, we could check and see. But on some of these 40Bs, I know the, some of the 40Bs are coming to conservation, and we like to hook up with the same engineers, they don't have a duplication of services, and they're familiar with the project mix, it goes a lot more smoothly, and it saves the applicant's money, because somebody else isn't relearning the whole game. So perhaps if we could tie in to some that they're happy with and send out requests to them, so we could either use them on our own, or if there was a joint thing that was going on, but we do need more than one, so.
I think soliciting the other, soliciting the other boards is a great idea, and I also think looking at neighboring towns and seeing who, what the competitors are using is also another resource.
So I think that, we'll ask Betsy if she could do some homework and make, send out some calls to people, see if they're interested, and we can, maybe on the next proposals, we'll send out a few of them, and...
Are there any local? Like, do you know of any, like, Norfolk registered businesses that, like, you know, civil engineer?
Not civil engineers big enough to do this work, no. The one that we had before Beta, we had PSC, Tom Houston, and he had a medium-sized firm, and he did other towns, and...
He's Foxborough, right?
Right, yeah, they'd used him for 15 years or so, but I think he was the closest firm. I think there's also one in Franklin that's a decent thing.
Have you seen one in Norman?
Beta was in Norman also, yeah.
Relatively local.
So we can have Betsy get some names, and we can do some homework and see if we can pick a couple to send out the next proposal to. Do you have any recommendations as well? You could add to the pot?
Well, I know Medway, working with Medway, that they use...
Well, I know Medway, working with Medway, that they use Tetra Tech.
They're big.
Yeah, that's who the...
Yeah, they're huge.
We use them at work.
Actually, that's who the ZBA is using for the bigger projects now.
They use them in my job.
Yeah. Or maybe that could be one that we try. Who uses them? Medway?
Medway.
No? Similar size to us, right?
Yep.
Maybe come up with another name, and we'll have three anyway to send out.
Good idea. Good idea.
Yeah. Because like I said, for years that we just had one person doing the proposal, which found out, comfortably, that really, that's not how it should be. Somebody should have the right to go competitive because what you're doing is holding an applicant hostage to one person's fees. So the town really got into a nightmare situation and continued on, and nobody really realized what the proper way to do it was amongst other things, so...
This is a copy.
Betsy, we're...
This is a copy of our last RFP.
We pretty much decided this Tetra Tech that Gino said works for Medfield...
Medway.
Medway, sorry. And they're also being used by the ZBA. Why don't we make...
Our ZBA or the...
Yes, our ZBA. So why don't we make them one of the folks that we contact, okay? And I think maybe initially, you can just call them as our fill-in planner and see if they might be interested in doing work for the town and bidding on some of our proposals, okay? And we'll see if we can get you maybe one or two more names. So we have four to choose from. Maybe we can get a few that we can...
Contact information for in July, please. Yes, I can send it to you. That firm used to be Rizzo and Associates, and they got bought out by Tetra Tech.
I think there was even a buyout prior to Tetra Tech for Rizzo.
Oh, was there?
Yeah.
Because Tetra Tech has a wetland division, everything, don't they? They pretty much cover everything.
They're big.
There's no traffic.
They're big.
Right, right. We just want to make sure the prices for a regular applicant. That's why we stopped sending them in. They're just really...
I think with the... Like with anything, it just depends on who you get, right?
Yeah.
Their knowledge base, their consistency, their...
Right. And the thing is too, most of them like Town Councils. When they work with towns, they know they don't get the same engineering rates as they would with a private person. They normally give the towns a different rate just because it's town work and they know the towns don't have the funding. So I know that's how all the Town Councils, they work at a percentage of a fee, they would be charging a private company. So we can talk to them about being interested in how they price out the towns, you know, the rates they have, et cetera, just before we start to get too many projects in here with no one to go to. I get... Just get nervous with a loss, too. And I thought both the Beta folks were very good, very impressed with them, knowledge-wise and thoroughness, and in both just leading the work.
Where they going?
I have no idea.
That's a good tip.
Yeah, that's a good thought. That's a good thought.
Well, Betsy probably has the cell number for Mike who left.
We could probably stalk him on LinkedIn.
Who's the number before Mike?
Andy Okafor.
Andy Okafor.
He moved to like Michigan or something.
All right, so Andy's up. But I wonder where Mike is?
I don't... I... They haven't even told me that Mike is off.
Right, I know. They mentioned the ZBA.
Somebody else told me, and I thought it was weird. I was getting correspondence from Bill McGrath.
Right. Bill's Mike's boss.
Right, but usually, everything would come from Mike.
I know. Right, I think Mike is... Why don't you call Mike on his cell phone and just find out his status?
Unless it was a company phone.
I know, that's what I assumed.
It's a company phone that he had to turn in.
Right.
Could be.
Bill McGrath will pick up. Mike's phone.
One more thing before we go.
Yes, sir.
I can find him on LinkedIn.
We all agreed to meet on Wednesday evening, which I think is fine. But we've got to stagger it so that we don't butt up against heads with the ZBA because we need this room. We all agree that the conference room downstairs is a poor second choice. So, you know, I would appreciate if you would check for October and so forth and just... If we have to adjust these dates, that's fine, but just...
Yeah, I went as far as checking September, so...
Okay. But we're in the same office, so hopefully, we can coordinate so they...
I'm sure we can.
Make their meetings on another, one of the three other Wednesdays. That would be great.
Any update on the planner search?
We have a headhunter. The headhunter...
Headhunter.
Yeah, we're going to go try to probably...
Take one from another town.
See where you find them.
Recruit. We call it recruiting.
So he promised he would be back in the next two or three weeks with some applicants, so... And the price that he was charging was extremely reasonable.
The headhunter?
It was surprisingly inexpensive.
Who is it? Do you know who the headhunter is?
No, but I know he was a very, like, he had a big background in town government, the city of Lowell and Lynn, town manager. So he's a pretty involved guy. And from what they're saving on Ray's salary, they've got plenty of funding to pay him because, you know, Betsy should be getting Ray's salary now, a proportion of it, because she's doing the front of all the work, you know? We try.
And the other thought before we adjourn...
Oops.
Betsy's falling off the table. Next meeting, are we going to interview...
We are.
How many up here now? Or is it like five?
Potential associate member candidates?
Two of them just this week.
Is it Jim Wilson? I think Jim is the latest person that was interested. We got a resume, perhaps, was it today or yesterday, Jim?
I think it was, yeah.
He decided to come in and join us, so how'd you enjoy the meeting?
Very good.
Low-key for this one, so that was a good first impression for you. Right, they're not all the same, but... But I think that we have... How many others that could come in? Two or three?
I think I've...
I think the first couple that we got were from years ago.
Yes, a couple of them are outdated, that's right.
I know we have someone from the Design Review that's interested, Aaron Hunt, and Jim, and someone that's an associate on the... Associate member of the ZBA is interested. So I think that our next meeting, we'll have everybody come in and give everybody 10 minutes or so and just talk and see if there's an interest on both sides. I know that you've already sent your resume, Jim, right? So thank you for that. And we can maybe come up with some decision at next meeting and pass it off to the selectmen and planning board and pass our thoughts. If we agree on somebody, we outbook them anyway, so we pretty much have what we want. Normally, they go along with what we want anyway, so...
There's no issue with somebody duly serving in two associate members of two boards?
And that would be me.
Yeah.
Associate members, not... Because we would overlap with the ZBA in some cases that we've seen before, so I just want to make sure that...
Actually, what I... And I talked to Hathaway. And actually, it's a pretty good thing because the cross-connection between... See, I couldn't even sit in as I was appointed to sit in the 40B meetings with the ZBA. It was involved that I would jeopardize any future possible appeals. So they nicely told me I couldn't sit at the table or have any say.
Why?
Yeah.
Why?
So I went meeting, and then I was pretty much told not to come back by the town consultant.
Why would that be?
Because a planning board member... It's almost like if you have knowledge in the field, they don't want you there because they said, "Upon appeal, if a planning board member was at the table, that could jeopardize their decision." So I was no longer there. But the point being is a lot of stuff going on there that we really should know about, and a lot of input on the projects that we really have the expertise to do that ZBA board is not set up to do, we can offer through this conduit. So I thought that, just on face value, anyway, right, it wouldn't be a bad thing. It'd be more of a positive thing. Years ago, before you were around, Kevin, we used to have roundtable meetings, and one or two members from every board got together once a month, and the simple thing that we did was we discussed all the current projects that every different board had. Just number one, to keep everybody involved with, this is what's happening right now at our board, it may be coming to you, or a consensus of a project that was affecting two or more boards, to have everybody's input at the same time. So everybody was informed right at the time. Because right now, it's sort of a silo-like thing that...
So what happened to those meetings, John? What happened to those meetings?
The selectmen just...
John became the chairman of all the boards, so it wasn't necessary anymore.
Right, we all media. But the selectmen dropped the ball, and people had trouble, you know, showing up because, you know what the meetings are like? It's hard to schedule folks, worrying a problem on another board now, just having no quorum, so it's really tough. But I think that the best thing is to just bring everybody in, feel them out, see what you're thinking, and see if someone can offer some added value to us because somebody has to be out for a couple of weeks or so. We don't want to be stuck at a quorum thing with these super majorities.
Yeah, makes sense. We just had a curiosity. Was it recently that you were asked not to sit, or was that a while ago?
Right here.
Well, that was quite a while ago.
Was quite a while ago?
The first 40B, when the ZBA asked for planning board representation, and I was the low man.
I probably used to do that.
Right, it was about eight months ago.
Representative.
So it's the first meeting. It was on Cleveland Street, the very first meeting on Cleveland Street. And that's when I was brought in after and asked nicely not to.
I'd rather not say you asked.
Interesting.
Because didn't you serve as the liaison for a little while?
It's almost like the state set you up so that if you have any background in the subdivision of land process, right, then rather not have to go around, which is, I think, why do they go before a hardship board for subdivision of land and dense subdivision, which makes it even tougher, you know?
Right.
It's almost like it's set up so these things go through.
Right.
So we really should have as much input as we can, and maybe we could have really a facet, if that was the case, whether it be by this person or somebody else, just to give us a regular... We never had this, and Jay Talman had mentioned how it's a regular pilot process, and I think at candidates, I said, "Well, I know nothing about it." We've never been asked our opinion on a 40B, never. So maybe... So maybe we can have some formal process now where we're asked to give an opinion, but for that opinion, we have to be updated regularly, you know?
Right.
So maybe we can work that in where that seems to be the busy land use board now, the ZBA, not us.
So that last instance with Mr. DePlacido's project, where he came in to talk to us about the roads, that was the first time something like that has been done?
Right.
It was only for the roads, because that is something that we...
Falls under ever.
And if you watch the meeting, when I asked, they wanted us to make a decision on roadway, I asked, "Could you at least come in and explain what it was about?" Rather than us try to decipher his plans, and he refused to come in. And it was almost like, is the audience going grumbly, right? And I said, "All it can do is help us understand what you're doing." Then he finally acquiesced and decided to come, but they don't want to come to the planning board with this stuff.
So best of luck at your interview next month, and regardless of how it works out, thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll be in touch with the time.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, if we're all set, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?